Well, he just turned six. Smith, are you ready?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call the regular city council meeting of May 8th, 2023 to order. Roll call, please.
Morris?
Here.
Larson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Perkins?
McAdams?
Here.
Verbic?
Here.
Favor? Mayor Barnes?
Here.
Six present.
Awesome. And Perkins and Favor both let me know that they would not be able to be here tonight. Moving on to agenda item B, Pledge of Allegiance. We have Captain Voluntary Action Center. Did you bestow that name onto him? Yes, okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I gather a call just came out.
Yep.
All right, moving into agenda item C, approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Second?
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Verbic. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I.
All right, the agenda has been approved. Moving on to the exciting one tonight. Agenda item D, presentations. We have the swearing in of newly elected officials. Recording Secretary Scott, you want to come on up? And Carolyn, you are the first one to be sworn in.
Who do this? In the middle. Do you want to write down and repeat after me? I, Carolyn Morris.
I, Carolyn Morris.
Having been elected as First Ward Alderman.
Having been elected as First Ward Alderman.
In the City of DeKalb.
In the City of DeKalb.
County of DeKalb.
County of DeKalb.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of Alderman.
The duties of Alderman.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Welcome again, Alderman Morris. All right, Alderman Smith.
Hi, don't get in the building.
I, Tracy Smith.
I, Tracy Smith.
Having been elected as Third Ward Alderman.
And being elected as Third Ward Alderman.
In the City of DeKalb.
In the City of DeKalb.
County of DeKalb.
County of DeKalb.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of Alderman.
The duties of Alderman.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Alderman McAdams.
I, Scott McAdams.
I, Scott McAdams.
Having been elected as Fifth Ward Alderman.
Having been elected as Fifth Ward Alderman.
In the City of DeKalb.
In the City of DeKalb.
County of DeKalb.
County of DeKalb.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of Alderman.
The duties of Alderman.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And now with great pleasure, I will call up Mr. John Walker to be sworn in as our new Ward Seven Alderperson.
I, John Walker.
I, John Walker.
Having been elected as Seventh Ward Alderman.
Having been elected as Seventh Ward Alderman.
In the City of DeKalb.
In the City of DeKalb.
County of DeKalb.
County of DeKalb.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of Alderman.
The duties of Alderman.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
All right, moving on to number two present. You know what? First, it's awesome to have the three of you back. I think we've done a lot of incredible work over the last couple of years that I've known you and been able to work with you. And I'm really excited to have you all back and to see what we're gonna be able to accomplish, at least for the next two years for me, and I know over the next four years for you all. Mr. Walker, it's badass to have you onboard. I'm super excited. I know you're gonna bring a ton of passion and energy to that role, which is exactly what's needed. Ward Seven had a great Alderman, and I know they're gonna have a great Alderman going forward. So, welcome to the team, man. This is one of the coolest things about our country, right? National elections, we all think, what impact is our vote actually gonna have? But when you think about, all politics is local. Right here is a perfect example of people coming together, voting for the person that they want to represent them where they live directly, and things that are gonna impact their life on a regular basis. This is one of the coolest moments, and I gotta thank everyone that came out and voted. I wish more people would come out and vote, but those that did, I'm so excited for it. And it's great that they voted in the team that we've got going forward. So, thank you all. I also want to let you all know, you don't have to stay. If you were here for the swearing in, you're more than welcome to leave, especially those of you with kids. I know it could get a little boring for the kids, but feel free to leave. It won't be, we don't take that as an insult, but you're more than welcome to stay, but it can be a little bit of a yawn sometimes.
Mayor?
This is agendas. Yes, ma'am?
I'm gonna step off to the side and get a photo with my family real quick. I apologize. I think in the past, we'd done it all together, but, so I'm gonna just step aside, because I've got like six kids here.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah. Do you want us to take, here, want me to take a picture? Here, Carolyn.
Scott, go ahead.
Scott's gonna, that's his job.
Not at all, man. Oh, I'll know by the time you get back. Yeah. No, it's not that one. No, it's where that knob is, there's a little lever. It might be broke. We'll get on that. Yeah, everyone's gotta get in. Little adjusting, everyone. Stand by a second. Hey, also, that's why. If any of you wanna take a few moments to make some comments, you're more than welcome to. Hearing none? Okay. We'll move on to proclamations. The first one I want to read is, "International Firefighters' Day of May 4th, 2023. Whereas International Firefighters' Day was established in 1999 to remember those firefighters worldwide lost in the line of duty protecting the safety of us all. And whereas the role of a firefighter in today's society, be it urban, rural, natural environment, volunteer, career, industrial, defense force, aviation, motorsport, or other, is one of dedication, commitment, and sacrifice, no matter what country they reside and work in. And whereas International Firefighters' Day recognizes those firefighters who have served their communities for most of their lives, and those who have served for just a few short years. They set themselves apart as model citizens, setting a fine example in their communities with their willingness and dedication. And whereas, hailing from all walks of life, they are our mothers, fathers, brothers, sisters, aunts, uncles, grandparents, neighbors, and friends. They protect us without wanting of recognition or reward. In our time of need, they are there with courage, compassion, and loyalty. They are the essence of the true meaning of community. Now therefore, I, Cohen Barnes, Mayor of the City of DeKalb, along with the City of DeKalb City Council, do hereby encourage all citizens to recognize not only our local firefighters, but those worldwide and year round, for their courage, selfless service, and sacrifice." All right.
Oh, we're sitting, you said, right?
Ruth, where are you on this?
Okay.
Can you find us people up front? That's you there. Gene, you not gonna get in on this? What do you think?
I know you wanted to say thank you, firefighters, but...
All right, and now we've got another proclamation for National Police Week, May 15 through the 21st, 2023. Whereas in 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the calendar week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. And whereas, the members of law enforcement, the agency of the City of DeKalb play an important role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of our community. And whereas, it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department, and that members of our department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, protecting them against violence or disorder, and protecting the innocent against deception, and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And whereas, our police department has grown to be a modern and scientific law enforcement agency, which unceasingly provides a vital public service. Now therefore, I, Cohen Barnes, Mayor of the City of DeKalb, along with the City of DeKalb City Council, urge our citizens to join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their communities, have established for themselves the rights and security of all citizens. National Police Week. Chief, you wanna do a quick photo up? Come on. Yeah, there you go. All right. You know the drill. Why not? It's just too much fun. All right, and then moving on to number four, we have the DeKalb Fire Department 2022 Annual Report. Chief, come on up.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. Okay. Excuse me just a minute. So, each year, we like to update you all on how the year panned out from 2022, the prior year. And so, we like to let you know our call volume and where the calls come from. So, here we go. Our call volume, you can see, was 7,400-plus calls, which is pretty even with last year, our busiest year. So, we were just a handful of calls off from that year. So, we continue to be quite busy, and you can see our 10-year trend continues to show an upward trend. So, we break it down a little more into fire incidents, which you can see, you know, in the home is where we have most of our fire emergencies. So, that's broken out for you. And then we broke down how busy are each ambulance is. So, we have three frontline ambulances. District Three is in the gray color, and that is our busiest ambulance, as you will see from our heat map shortly. And then Station One, Medic One is next, and Medic Two then. So, our fire engine responses, similar story. Again, in the gray is Engine Three, in the busiest district. The other two districts are pretty even. And then our heat map for call volume will support what you just saw. And then, it's interesting to note that we've had a number of simultaneous calls. So, and I didn't put a slide in that for you, but we had 2,744 occasions where we had more than one vehicle on the road at the same time. And then we get into our training hours. Over the pandemic, our training hours suffered, as you can imagine. So, last year, I think I reported somewhere in the 8,000-hour range of training. And this past year, I'm sorry, in '21, it was 8,000. '22, we're approaching 21,000 training hours, and we'll be over that this year. Many of the alphabet soup of the regulating agencies and so on do put out mandates on how many hours we need in certain categories. So, we kind of list what some of those agencies are. And then we had quite a few personnel changes. Bart Gilmore retired, and then we have a list of promotions you can see for yourself. And that continues into this year. You're aware, obviously, of the SAFER grant. So, in February of '22 is when we fulfilled that grant with these hires. And we continue to replace retirees and so on. And hiring is a daunting task because of the requirements and fewer people to pull from to get into this career. But our hires have been fantastic, and their training is going well, and they're adapting nicely to our business. So, looking forward, we do have another raise in our minimum staffing coming up in November. Again, the training is progressing well. We have new SCBA's coming. You all approved those a year, it seems like a year ago. It was probably eight months ago. Supply chain issues are delaying a lot of these things. New station alerting system is being installed now, so we hope within about two to three months, we'll have that up and running. And new portable radios should be arriving next week. And then we'd like to mention that we do have a good working relationship with our local 1236 firefighters. And we asked them to let us know how they did over the year, and they did contribute over $25,000, and mostly they're dues to the community. And that includes an AED program, and I think you guys know some of the other programs that they contribute to. So, we're always happy that they participate in that way with our community. I have a full report on our website if you'd like to see more of what the DeKalb Fire Department does and how we respond. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Counsel, any questions for the chief? Nice job, as always.
Thank you.
Oh, Alderman Morris.
Sorry. I know we've been working hard to get staffing up for you to balance out the burden and reduce overtime hours. How does it feel like that's working? And obviously, we've got a few more people coming in the fall, so...
Right. We are currently three positions down right now. We're just waiting for the three recruits to finish their paramedic requirement, and they'll get a start date when that happens. But we can see a difference already. Our overtime has shifted from regular staffing to training backfill. But it is significantly lower year-to-date than we were last year.
Great.
It's great to hear. Yes, Alderman Smith?
Chief, is that second engine in service yet, or how about its status on that?
The second Rosenbauer engine that we ordered is at its launching point. So, our vendor is from St. Louis area. They received the engine a week or two ago. They have to do a couple of tweaks from our final inspection, then it will be delivered. So, we anticipate in the next four to six weeks.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Hearing none other. Nice job, as always, chief. It's been great to, obviously, we've leaned in really hard with our fire department. It's been exciting to see all the new hires. You guys have a lot of fun equipment coming in that you're gonna get to, I want to say play with, but that'd be downplaying the importance and the life safety elements of it. But you've got a lot of just really cool stuff to start learning how to maximize its usefulness within a department. So, I know all of us at Counsel are just proud of our fire department, and it's been nice over the course of 2022 and leading some into 2023 to be able to get you guys the tools and the equipment that you need to be successful in your job. So, thanks, chief. Make sure you pass it down to everyone else, how appreciative we are.
And thank you for your continued support.
You bet. All right, moving on to agenda item E, public participation. Number one, I've got Tom Riley. Come on up to the podium, Tom.
My name is Tom Riley. I don't have a whole lot of things written down, but I did go to a meeting for the DeKalb City Environmental Commission. I was very, very pleased at what they were bringing up. And just to let everybody know, I'd really like to be on that myself. I do have a concern. I have some neighbors that actually, their truck is like 30 or 40 years old, and he's actually spewing stains of oil on the pavement. Not a good thing. And then I did, I watched him yesterday when he actually changed oil on three of his five vehicles, and then he threw the oil into the, not, not the...
Storm drain? The storm drain there?
Into the, into the... What do you call it?
Catch basin.
So, basically, yeah. And it concerns me because, you know, we have to look out after everybody else in the future. You know, it's not just us, it's our kids, our grandkids. And it's important that we keep everything clean. I do, I did get ahold of Lance Leddick. He is going to be looking out and see if the EPA in the city of, in the state, if it's a violation. I think with everybody, I remember when I was, when I first started working for Caterpillar in '70 and '69, people would actually go and have to have their vehicles checked for emissions, leaking. They don't do that anymore. Why not? Really need to bring it back. So, if I can't get Lance onboard, then I'll contact Lauren Underwood and see it, because she's our congresswoman, and see if she can get that enacted back in so that people aren't... Yes, sir?
No.
Let it finish and then I'll help you out.
I'm sorry. So, that's all I have to say. I just, I just hope that I can make a difference. I'm an organic gardener. I love gardening, do whatever I can for the community, and I love this town, I really do. So, thank you so much.
Thanks, Tom. City manager.
So, Tom, what you've described is a violation of a couple of things, and we can help you with this. Before you leave tonight, Andy Rye, who's Assistant Director of our Public Works Department, I think you know Andy?
Yes, I contacted Andy. He said he can't do anything.
Oh, wait. And Zach Gill, you give them, there's a storm management plan and requirements that we have to follow that are in line with the state's requirements. So, Zach Gill, who's our city engineer, is in the back here. Those two can take you outside and get the information. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. All right, also, Mike Trittle. And Mike, I forgot to remind Tom, but you have three minutes for public comment.
I got my timer.
You got it. He'll put it up on the TV, too.
Good evening, everybody. Glad to be here again. It's my pleasure to address this group. On 19, or 19, 2019, I came to then Mayor Smith and Alderman McAdams with a proposal to eliminate a safety hazard that we had on Barb Boulevard when the then high, no, it was the middle school, when they had events. In 2021, just short, short of a year later, the city council passed the ordinance, making it resident parking only on the north side of the street. And Zach did a tremendous job in engineering this whole thing, set up 100-foot loading zone on the south side, and leaving the rest of the south side of the street open for parking, though we were encouraging event participants and fans to park in the Huntley Middle School parking lot. On April 29th this year, again, there was a 10-school invitational event brought to that location. At approximately 8:30 in the morning, Barb Boulevard was socked solid with traffic from First Street to Fourth Street because the north side was clogged with illegally parked cars, and the south, the south loading zone was clogged with illegally parked cars. And the buses were loading in the middle of Barb Boulevard. So, I called, as we've been instructed, we called the police department, and I'm sure that young lady that answers the phone every time when I say this is your favorite neighbor from Barb Boulevard, I'm sure she just loves hearing from me again. But, and as I stated in the letter that I sent to Chief Byrd, that was me, we do appreciate the effort that's been put forth this year. It's great. Unfortunately, we need a little more. Officer Diedrich and I spent some time when he was out looking over the situation, issuing tickets and so forth. But I don't ever come to anybody with a complaint unless I have a suggestion for a solution. And that is a plan for larger-than-normal sporting events at Huntley Middle School. A little planning and communication could go a long ways, and I forgot to push start on this thing, so hopefully you guys...
You have two minutes and 30 seconds, Mike.
We'll go a long way towards solving the problems with parking and traffic during sporting events larger than the normal schedule, such as that on April 29th, 2023. It all boils down to OCI, Organization, Communication, and Implementation. I have a five-point plan, actually a six-point plan, but five are the primary. Notify and inform visiting teams in writing instructing as to the location of and where the buses are to park.
Mike, we have it.
You have it. Okay. I didn't know if you wanted me to read it in the record.
I wish I could let some people run over, but others take advantage of that kindness.
Yeah, are we done?
So, we've got the five points. I am curious, because we went through a lot of work trying to figure out a solution to this. And Ruth, did you go to the school district yet?
I'm sorry, what?
Did you go to the school district yet and make the same presentation?
No, but I'm going to. No, but I'm going to.
Yeah, that'd be good. I'm happy to reach out to the president of the school board, too, and make her aware of the situation and see what they can do as well. But I would encourage you to pursue with them. City manager.
I was just going to say, Chief Byrd has a very good working relationship with the superintendent. And I think we can jump the gun a little bit and contact her tomorrow and just say we, there was an issue, it was brought to our attention at the council meeting last night, and that we would like to make sure that whenever they have larger events, and they may have one or two yet before the end of the school year, the spring, I don't know, that there's some advance warning, any more than we would go in their parking lot and do police training, you know, without talking. So they're coming in our streets and their, their teams and their fans are, are taking over. So that's not, that's not what we intend, that's not what we tolerate. So I think there's, you're absolutely right, there's an answer to this. It's simple communication. We plan a little bit, and then we avoid it. So everybody gets along.
Yeah. Well, it was just a really good thing that there wasn't somebody that had a heart attack or something.
I was just going to say, emergency vehicles can't get through in that situation.
Because it was raining, the ground was soft, and the ambulance would have had to gone off-road to get there.
And we'd like a little notice, too, just to make sure you don't have to chase us to bring somebody down if we probably didn't know about it. And so easy remedies here, it seems to me. Good faith and good communication, so.
So alone, talking to the president of the school board, chief can talk to the superintendent.
We haven't had a lot of luck with them.
Definitely go to the school board meeting and do the same presentation. All right.
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
Appreciate it, Mike. Thank you. All right, moving on to agenda item F, appointments, we have none. Now moving on to agenda item G, the consent agenda. One, minutes of the joint review board meeting of January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. Two, minutes of the regular city council meeting of April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. Three, accounts payable and payroll through May eighth, twenty twenty-three in the amount of one million four hundred fifty-five thousand seven hundred forty-one dollars and sixty-five cents. Four, investment and bank balance summary through March twenty twenty-three. Five, year-to-date revenues and expenditures through March twenty twenty-three. F, six, FY twenty twenty-two, community development block grant, fourth quarter report. Seven, fiscal year twenty twenty-three, human services funding first quarter report. Eight, police pension fund, annual treasures report for the year ended December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. And nine, resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero five four, authorizing a worker's compensation lump sum petition in order in the amount of twenty-two thousand fifty-four dollars and seventy-four cents. Kelly Sullivan. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Yep, got to abstain to this one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Abstain.
Morris?
You bet, man.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I?
All right, moving on to agenda item H, public hearings, we have none. Agenda item I, considerations, none. Agenda item J, resolutions. Number one, resolution two zero two three dash zero five five, authorizing a petition to the Illinois Commerce Commission for an at-grade rail crossing of Kriego Road. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman McAdams, city manager.
Thank you, mayor. In their background tonight, there is a map that locates the future or intended rail spur that is in question here on this particular resolution. And it's fairly straightforward. There is something called the Troy Grove Railroad, which goes diagonally from basically Lincoln Highway and actually gets, cuts through the back of the south side and crosses Fairview and goes under the tollway and then ends up on the west side of Fourth Street. But it's at such an angle that a spur could be taken off of it to go along the north edges of the properties in Chicago West Business Center, such as Ferrara, such as the new, it's known as Supernova, previously Wildcat. Couple of properties in that area, including Supernova, are looking for rail access. So we, we have to go through the steps of petitioning the Interstate Commerce Committee, Illinois Commerce Commission to allow for this. So that's all this is. There's a process underway. We've had conversations, the principals of the business center have had conversations. We've also been talking with Union Pacific, which runs the railroad line. We feel it would be a good investment, it would be privately built, and the investment will be private. But we still have some purview as the local municipality may have to help with the petition. That's simple.
Counsel, comments or questions? Because if not for this, economic development screeches to a halt. Yes. Awesome. All right, hearing no other comments or questions, roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
All right, resolution two zero two three dash zero five five passes. Moving on to resolution number two, resolution two zero two three dash zero five six, authorizing the appropriation of motor fuel tax funds for the local share of the Peace Road and Fairview Drive widening project in the amount of one million dollars and concurring, and concurring of the Illinois Department of Transportation award of three million five hundred fourteen thousand seven hundred seventy-nine dollars and fifty-six cents for the surface transportation urban project. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved, second.
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Verbic. This is so exciting.
Yeah, it is.
Can't wait to hear.
As you know from the background, IDOT has superintended the, the bid letting and has gone and recommended the, to us, the, the award of the bid to the lowest bidder. There were two, Current Contracting, William Charles Construction. IDOT's recommendation is to go with a low bid, and so was before you denied as concurrence with the IDOT recommendation, and one doesn't disagree.
I don't know about you all, but this is the number one thing I hear from residents is the condition of our streets and crime. They're probably almost tied in some ways. But Peace Road, I hear about that one over and over and over again. And what I love about projects like this is talk about it's going to impact at least half, if not more, of the community who are getting on eighty-eight on a semi-regular basis. They'll have at least a smooth drive once we get past the construction season. Any other comments or questions from council on this? Hearing none, awesome, roll call.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
Resolution two zero two three dash zero five six passes. And Alderman Walker, you couldn't have walked into probably an easier agenda. This is all good stuff. All right, moving on to resolution number three, approval in omnibus form of resolution two zero two three dash zero five seven, authorizing an agreement with DeKalb Cornfest Incorporated to hold the twenty twenty-three Cornfest. Resolution two zero two three dash zero five eight, approving a nonprofit special event liquor license for the twenty twenty-three Cornfest. And resolution two zero two three dash zero five nine, approving the regulation of traffic on Illinois Route Thirty-Eight Lincoln Highway for the twenty twenty-three Cornfest. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Smith. City manager.
Thank you, mayor. Usually we do three resolutions, so that means the mayor has to read three different times something very similar, although one has historically been to allow the special event and another is to award a liquor license. And finally, that we will abide by the traffic regulations that attend any traffic on the state highway that is known as Illinois Thirty-Eight. So we put them all together, it comes to the same thing. There's never been a dissenting vote on this in the history that anybody remembers. So we are recommending this omnibus resolution.
I love it.
In behalf of the Cornfest Festival. There are conversations that go on at the staff level with the Cornfest Committee. We're always open to ideas from the council about how to do it better, and we'll be welcoming those as we go through this year's process. And recommend your approval.
Counsel, questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
So resolution two zero two three dash zero five seven, resolution two zero two three dash zero five eight, and resolution two zero, two three dash zero five nine pass. Moving on to agenda item K, ordinances, second reading, we have none. And then ordinances, first reading, agenda item L, number one, ordinance two zero two three dash zero one nine, approving the rezoning of the site at nine oh two Peace Road from the High Heavy Industrial District to the PD dash I Plan Development, Development Industrial District, and approval of a preliminary development plan, EO five hotels. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman McAdams, city manager.
Thank you, mayor. Our planning director, Dan Olson, has done his usual very thorough job in laying out some background for you. I've summarized that in the agenda. And what this is about is petition from EO five hotels, represented by Permet Patel, who's in the audience tonight, available to answer any questions you may have. This is for the approval of the rezoning of a two-point-five-acre site at nine oh two Peace Road from Heavy Industrial to PDI Plan Development Industrial District. The intent is to accommodate development of a four-story, one-hundred-twenty-one-room Marriott-branded hotel, first in the county, and which means in our area. The subject property is, is in the Airport North Industrial Park, Unit Four, lies between that bumper-to-bumper auto parts store and the fast-stop Express gas station along the east side of Peace, north of Pleasant. Sixty rooms would be branded as Fairfield Inn and Suites by Marriott, which are Standard Stay, and sixty-one rooms would be branded as Tom Place Suites by Marriott Extended Stay. And those are roughly the same in number. They, in the building, they would be sharing the parking lot, lobby, front desk, meeting room, swimming pool, and so forth. In addition to the rezoning, there are typically a development plan. The preliminary plan was reviewed by our staff. In your background, there are some marked up areas, some minor marked up areas to help with the access in, on the parking side. The final development plan would come back to the Planning and Zoning Commission and the city council prior to the issuance of building permit. So we're in a process here, as we typically are at this stage. The hotel brings not only a new option for visitors in our area, especially those who are Marriott loyal customers, it's going to increase, of course, our, our property tax and hotel motel tax, which helps us other, other taxing bodies as well. It will also encourage more commercial development. The hotel is often a spur to that along this corridor, it's an important corridor. And there are opportunities, there are, there's acreage that can be developed for other commercial purposes. And additionally, the, because it's within three miles of I eighty-eight, it will, under tollway rules, have its own sign on the tollway. And so all those are pluses for our community. There are a couple of minor waivers, more minor than most that we've brought before you in recent years. One is to increase the maximum site coverage. It's seventy percent as a general rule, this is seventy-seven percent, but it's all meaningful stuff. It's, it's, and it's suitable for the use and also on the site. And the other is, there is usually a parking setback along the interior lot lines of five feet, this is four and a half feet. But the offsets are that the same amount of, the usual amount of required landscaping and so forth is still going to be on the site. And the distance between the lot line and the nearest building is a hundred and fifty feet. So it's a very minor waiver. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this on, at their last regular meeting last week, Monday night, and by unanimous vote of six to zero, recommended your approval. We support the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation.
One thing, too, the DeKalb County Convention of Visitors Bureau talks.
Wrote a letter of support.
Yeah, all the time.
So did DC, DC.
Yeah, the events that they have, that we reach capacity with hotels, and it impacts the ability of bringing some of the events to our community. So the addition of this is just great from a tourism perspective, too, especially because of Northern Illinois University. Comments or questions? Alderman Larson.
And we've lost out on like some of the AH, IHSa events because they require a certain amount of hotel rooms. And we just, even going as far as Elgin and Sandwich, we just don't have it in the area. So, yeah, this is really needed.
Alderman McAdams.
Yeah, not a question, but more of a comment. I read that Marriott points were being redeemed by people who go into Naperville and then travel to DeKalb. And so I like the idea that we're capturing the tax revenue from those folks in DeKalb County instead of the state and Naperville capturing those taxes.
Alderman Verbic.
I agree with the Planning and Zoning Commission. The neighbors and visitors to the Ward Six locations of Hampton Inn and Home Two Suites have been very pleased. So we look forward to your continuing investment in DeKalb and keep up the great work.
And as a, oh, Alderman Smith?
Bill, maybe, I know I read in here, we're going to need some adjustments to the entrance.
Yeah, it's, it's a preliminary plan, and, and it was marked, it's marked in your background for the agenda tonight, and the planning commission saw that, agreed with it. We agree at the staff level in the interest of getting this to you so that other things can fall in place for the, the owner. We, we were satisfied that the intentions and the indication are there.
Great. Yeah, that's my word, and I really think it'll be a positive impact. I've had a lot of good things come out of this one, so thank you.
Because of work, I have to travel extensively, and Marriott is always my go-to. Every property is just well-run, quality product, so I can't be more excited. So, and definitely appreciate your continued investment in the city of DeKalb. It's awesome, Mr. Patel. Hearing no other questions or comments, roll call, please.
Walker?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
An emphatic yes.
Seven yes.
All right, with that, ordinance two zero two three dash zero one nine passes.
Second reading?
What?
Need a second reading.
Oh, yeah.
Motion to waive second reading and approve.
Second.
Not on the spot with that. Motion by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderwoman Larson. Any questions or comments to waive second reading? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
Second reading has been waived for ordinance two zero two three dash zero one nine. Mr. Patel, thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, that moves us on to our second-to-last item, we'll say. Reports and communications, council member reports. Would anyone like to start? Alderman McAdams.
I was reading something that I came across that I thought was appropriate for this evening as the four of us sitting up here begin a new term and think about our commitment to, to service and commitment to the community. It's a quote from George Bernard Shaw, and it says, "This is the true joy in life, being used for a purpose recognized by yourself as a mighty one, being a force of nature instead of a feverish, selfish little clot of ailments and grievances, complaining that the world will not devote itself to making you happy. I'm of the opinion that my life belongs to the whole community, and as long as I live, it's my privilege to do it for what I can. I want to be thoroughly used up when I die, for the harder I work, the more I live. I rejoice in life for its own sake. Life is no brief candle to me, it is a sort of splendid torch, which I have got hold of for the moment, and want to make it burn as brightly as possible before handing it on to future generations." It was just something I thought that was appropriate for this evening.
That was all Shaw.
Yeah.
That was good. Alderman Smith?
I had the honor of attending the downtown event on last Friday night. Very well turned out. Very well turned out, a lot of positive, a lot of people wanted to see it, wanted to see it again. I don't know, I have a feeling you've probably already been contacted. A couple of our staff members were down there, I, it would just, it worked, and there was a lot of positives, a lot of positives about the roadway reduction. I mean, that's what everybody said, traffic will slow down, people weren't afraid to cross the road, so be prepared, I think they're coming back, so thank you.
I heard from a Sycamore resident that they came through downtown, and they were like, my God, DeKalb is hopping. Loved hearing that. Alderwoman Morris?
I'm honored to be elected again, I'm thankful for the opportunity to serve the community, and just here to serve, thank you.
Alderwoman Larson?
This past week, I had a meeting with the CEC, I'm on their board, and the health depart, there's a new recycling center that's gonna be out the health department, so if you live in a place where they don't pick up recycling, they don't have special things, you can go to the health center. And I also got to put on my blue this week, and I got to be down at the police department, where they had three new candidates come in, and what was really exciting is they're from DeKalb, so they're re-chosing DeKalb, and two of them have been part of our police force already as either an intern or a dispatch person, and so that tells me even more. They've seen the insides, and they choose DeKalb, so that says a lot about our police department. So I was real excited about that. Thanks, Chief Byrd, for finding these great candidates.
Alderman Verbic.
Council members, Morris, Smith, McAdams, and Walker, congratulations, really look forward to the opportunities and challenges that we'll be working on over the next couple of years. Alderman Walker, anything?
Well, first of all, kinda wanna apologize, but not for breaking down here. I'm originally from Indianapolis, Indiana. You know, growing up, I would never thought in a million years I would be here in front of people like you all. I moved here as an eighteen-year-old punk kid that, you know, thought I can do whatever, and, you know, say whatever to anybody I want, but the best thing for me was getting to work at a job like UPS, and getting to meet people from all backgrounds, genders, you know, just, just a lot of people. And the one thing that has taught me is the respect for people and how to really love a community, because, you know, I was able to raise four kids out here, you know, two are working right now, but it just, you know, it just was a moment that everything was just flashing before me, just about, you know, the steps that I've taken to be the man I am today, and, you know, I've been put on boards, you know, to elect our police chief. I got to meet good guys like Andy Ray, Bill Nicholas, Cohen, become friends with McAdams, Larson, Verbic, we go back, kids grew up together. So, you know, just, you know, I just want everybody to understand that I'm not just here for minorities, I'm just not here for black men, I'm just not here for women, I'm here to do the best job that I can do for DeKalb, and I want everybody to always understand that. That's where I am, I have the highest integrity of just about any guy that you ever meet. So going forward, I want everybody to know I'm about DeKalb and what makes DeKalb better. That's all.
Well said, sir. For me, a bunch going on, some highlights, we had a meeting with ComEd regarding, in part, the rail spur. You know, ComEd, with everything going on on the south side of town, it gets complicated on a regular basis, but I do wanna call out that ComEd has just been a great partner. Anytime we've needed them to come to the table, they come, not with one, not with two, five, ten people, in order to be able to figure out what the problem is and come up with a solution. So I don't know if they're listening or not, I bet if I had to guess, Nick Escobar is, knowing him, but ultimately, I just wanna say, I've enjoyed working with ComEd. Also, I was on the WLVK radio show again with TD, that's always enjoyable, it's great that they carve out some time to allow us, I think the police chief, you also have a show on a monthly basis as well, just to be able to educate citizens of DeKalb on what's going on, and it's just a great opportunity to go on there, and TD makes it so easy. Also attended a farm-to-table event, it was a dinner at Blooming Gardens, hosted by NIU, and it was really around the NIC Center, which is the Northern Illinois Center, oh my gosh, I'm looking at you, Bill, you were there. N I C C S, that, I can't believe I can't think of it. Northern Illinois Community Center of Sustainability, I think that's it. Ultimately, it's the new NIC Center, I think it's about a twenty-plus-million-dollar project that is an initiative within the state of Illinois, driven from the University of Illinois, and really, it's gonna be focused on sustainable food supplies. This is gonna be a great additional Northern Illinois, Northern Illinois University from a research perspective, so really looking forward to attracting more professional staff and more students because of the NIC Center, and they are moving forward at this point, they've been talking about it what seems like forever, but now it's actually gonna move forward, which is phenomenal. And they had a great panel, too, just learned a lot about different environmental issues and different issues that are affecting in the environment and affecting our food supply. So it was well-tended and a well-done evening. Last, I did another police ride-along, I went on, I think it was my fifth one, this was last Friday, I think it was, and, you know, chief, I, what's always fascinating, a common theme is listening to the junior officers talk about the team, and they talk about that a lot, where they were before, or maybe another job that they had, but they talk about what makes, what makes it, why they wanna stay with the DeKalb Police Force, is the people they work with. And boy, when you hear that, and you hear them talk about their standard, that not everyone can be a DeKalb police officer, and you have a high standard, and they know that's affecting our ability to recruit and bolster the numbers up, but they don't care about that. It's more important that you find the right person and get them on the team, and I heard that over and over and over again, so that was incredible. It was also incredible, it was the most quiet night I've ever been on, ever. We never responded to one-nine-one-one call. It was all pulling people over, and boy, did we pull some people over that, one guy had three pounds of marijuana coming back from Chicago, just tossed in the back of his seat. So he's, yeah, he's in trouble at this point. But I always appreciate the ride-alongs, I always appreciate the support of our officers, and it's great just to see firsthand what's going on in our community, so thanks, chief, make sure you tell everyone I said thank you. With that, city manager report.
Thank you, just two quick things. Congratulations, our newly sworn council members, I look forward to serving you as I have always, and I hope I can be available to you whenever you need me. I also wanna thank Mr. Patel, he had other choices, he chose DeKalb.
He did.
And I'm very grateful for that, as I know the council is, thank you.
Absolutely. All right, hearing nothing else, we'll move to agenda item N, executive session. I would take a motion to approve us to hold an executive session in order to discuss, A, the purchase or lease of real property as provided for in five ILCS one-twenty slash two C five, and B, the sale or lease of real property as provided for in IL, for in five ILCS one-twenty slash two C six. Can I have a motion to move to executive session?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Alderwoman Morris, seconded by Alderman Verbic. All right, we are, what? Oh, roll call, of course. You guys are so quick, like, give me, give me two seconds.
Smith?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Morris?